Thank you, John. We got John Ambrose so up.
Okay, I'm here on behalf of Piedmont Housing. Uh, summertime's coming. We have a lot of kids over there. Seems like more than usual, but anyway, we purchased some of these signs. And we'd like to have two of them put up on, uh, Line Street and one put up on Third Street.
Lions and Third?
I think we, we, uh, we'd asked about it and they said that if we purchased the sign in the city, put them up. But anyway, if you want to put them up, uh, we'll buy them. And we'll make sure you have them, so. I'll leave this one here with Robbie now, so.
Four and Sixth Street again?
Lions and Third?
What, which street was?
Two on Lion Street, that's the row houses. And then one on Third Street, that'd be the row houses across from the church. So. Maybe the kids have a safe summer. That's all I have.
That's nice, they're very nice, thank you.
I'll leave this one here for Paul.
Okay.
Good seeing you.
Take care, buddy.
Okay, TJ?
We, we are going to, um, have our sign unveiling on the fifth of May at one o'clock over at the, um, over by the bridge. I just had a question over there, if we had enough people, um, in that lot where Dr. Best's office is, I mean, do you have to get permission to, to just stand in there or whatever?
Uh, the church owns that, not the doctor's office, but.
Okay.
People, what did you say, Saturday?
Yes.
Church, there's not churches in there.
Okay. I mean, I just don't want.
I don't think they would have a problem with it because people park in there at all times, but I can't, I can't say yes.
Where, Riverside?
Yeah.
I'll call tomorrow and ask if you want me to.
Sure, sure.
It's, the church owns it, not Riverside.
Right, but Lois has.
Okay.
Lois also has control because she's the ones that asked me about putting the signs in there for people who are parking there about the tone and things.
And you will call?
Lois Hartman, y'all give my holler, boy.
Yeah, I didn't want if there was, um.
Saturday, the.
The fifth. I didn't want people to, um, be out on the street or anything for safety. Um, so, also I'm working to getting Poochy's, uh, help, working to help me get an honor guard there. I'm, I'm gonna check with, um, I guess Mr. Jackson to talk about getting one of the fire trucks. And, and my friend here said he tried to get me the Piedmont Lion truck there. And, um, just, just to show for, Mr. Robbie's never coming home, so anything that we could do to show support for him is, uh, is, is amazing. I'm also gonna put in a paper with Liz Beavers, my friend Liz Beavers. And, um, we'll have refreshments afterwards at the Legion already ransacked upstairs that are immediately following the brief ceremony. So, um, if, if you could come, this man, Mayor, and would ask the mayor from Kaiser Delicate House, so he said he's gonna come and, um, you know, just, um, whoever else. Invite Mr. Lewis from, from the high school and, uh, people like that, Mr. Dilly if they come. But, um, the, the, um, proclamation, the resolution that I have for Mrs. Price, Oliver, I had it typed up and gave it to your staff here the other day. And what I wanted to do was get the mayor from Piedmont and Kaiser to sign it. I'll get Mr. Dilly, the superintendent, and Mr. Williams to sign it. Mr. Mr. Lewis to sign it, principal of the high school. And what I wanted to do is for her, like I said, she came back and taught at Howard High. And she was part of the, uh, desegregation when they went to Kaiser. She taught, taught at Kaiser when they, they lifted, uh, segregation. And, and if I could, I'll work with the schools to get in maybe from pre-K on up to a senior to sign the resolution for her. And Senator Manchin's office is going to do a, a resolution for, for her as well. Talk with Mike Garcia. And he's gonna get on that as soon as possible, so. Um, like, like the resolution I have, do you guys have, like, paper like that that we can, that someone can type it up on and then I could get signature?
That big one we had here?
Is the big one. And we don't have that kind of paper.
Okay, is there, is there something special we can do it on, like, uh, instead of just a, a blank piece of paper? Is there something we can wait or can, I know, I mean, we still, hey, 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 why not use that? They've got computers now.
They have the blank citations, but Walmart and that, they're not very big. Can you talk to Harold, that Harold, the guy with Harold, man?
Never mind, Mike might have an idea of what we can do next, yeah.
I mean, I'll pay for it, I, I just didn't want it to be on just a standard piece of. Yeah, because it's, it's about a page long, the resolution, so. When, when can I meet with you to, to check off the sign there?
If you mind, and you can call me, no matter, no matter what time of day or weekend.
Okay.
It's one three oh four, five nine six, four one nine four.
Is that all you have, TJ?
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
And the commission improvement from.
Which one, CJ?
Kraus.
From just second.
C R O U S C.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Correspondence. May the third is gonna be the National Day of Prayer. They're having the National Day of Prayer breakfast in Kaiser at Ponte Rosa, beginning at eight o'clock. I think they want you there at seven thirty, it's from eight to nine thirty. Then at noon, they're meeting at the courthouse to do a noon prayer. I, I got a ticket, I'm going to the breakfast. They also asked if we could have a fire truck with a flag. They have one from New Creek coming and one from Kaiser coming. I just talked to Zach Bor, him and Tim Jackson are supposed to see if they can get one so Piedmont is represented down there also. But if anybody's interested, you have to ask, you have to have a ticket to get into that. That's fifteen dollars a ticket and that's on May third. Breakfast starts at nine, eight.
Where you getting tickets at, Ponte Rosa?
No, you gotta call seven eight eight nineteen ten or three oh one two six eight four four seven nine. The speaker at the breakfast is Scott Berg. He's the district director for the Wildlight. That was always held at the college before, this is the first time I've known it to be held at Ponte Rosa. And then on April twenty seventh, which is.
What's today?
Today, it wasn't May third. May, May third.
Tomorrow.
April twenty seventh, Friday. They're having the children's memorial flags up ceremony. And it's gonna be held at the Mineral County Courthouse lawn and it is at twelve o'clock noon. I've never been to one, but they said that's a very nice service. They raise flags with the children, the Children Network flag and the United States flag. And they have a couple speakers down there and it's a memory of the thousands of children that's lost to violence. So that's Friday at noon at the courthouse. Sponsored by the Children, Mineral County Partners in Prevention. Handled our papers from the Mineral County Health Department to get our permits for the pool. This year, they're a little different, so I kinda wanna ask, I don't think it's ever had a playground on here before. So I had it on the agenda about the health department for now, but we might have to tape that till we can ask John what all has to be, what the fees are for all of that. Anybody else have any correspondence? Officer report? I have, um, a ledger of our bank accounts. Don't we do them individually or just a total summary of our available balance? All right, generals, two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Water, three thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Sewer, seven thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Parks, seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Pool, seven thousand one hundred two dollars and seventy-two cents. Nine four one, four hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Police fund, four thousand ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents. There's nothing in this small city block grant or sewer repair. The fire department grant was recently given to them, so there's five dollars and forty-two cents left. This committee to revive Piedmont is not a city account. Fairs and festivals, six thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Rainy day, eight hundred and six dollars and three cents. Security deposits, three thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and one cents. And coal severage, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents for a total. Oh, housing assessment has a hundred and forty-five dollars. So our total available bounds, balances are forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And shortly we'll be having our automatic, um, withdrawals to start paying those taxes back to the IRS. And it'll start, you said, July?
June.
June, three thousand a month?
Fifteenth.
Three thousand a month? I'm playing with this thing, trying to get it to keep going. That's what it was, right? It'll come out on the fifteenth of each month, three thousand dollars. About? It's a lot.
John? Uh, nothing much, except for Ernie said he was looking for Burt's to repair some of the fire irons. He said, need new caps on them. Other than that, nothing much. Rick?
Ernie, gang, you going on?
I had to see here, got, got the Ford dump truck back in service. The rest of our road, I fixed it last weekend. We got the pool drained and cleaned out.
Looks nice.
Uh, had my guys start today filling in some potholes or canyons. Uh, also had, uh, visit from John from the health department. We went, looked at a customer's sewer problem. Other than that, that's all I've got to nail.
Okay, like Ernie said, the pool, they cleaned the pool out, it looks very nice. I'm gonna order the paint, which is gonna cost about five hundred dollars, which is about what we made at our dinner Sunday. We had our last dinner Sunday, we, uh, took in nine hundred and seventeen dollars. The cost to put it on was four hundred and thirty-seven, so we made a profit of four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh. I'm still looking for volunteers for the ticket booth and the concession stand because I don't wanna put lifeguards in those places to cut down on the costs for town. I do have the Burlington Methodist Family Services, Services bringing people up. They will help clean and work their stands if we need them. I was approached by Ernie. I want Mike, what's her, Walker. Ernie Walker opened up, uh, Cruisin' Treats up in Westernport. He's having a weekly fundraiser, fifty-fifty drawing up at his place. And he's giving the proceeds to the Piedmont pool. He gave me my first, I think it was seventeen dollars this week, but that was only from two days. But seventeen dollars is seventeen dollars. And, um, Johnny Schengler from Port West to Westernport said he wants to have us a wing day. And the, the, the date we're setting so far could be changed, but was May seventeenth. And Port West will give us ten percent of their profits for that day. Everything seems to be going okay. We've already got four bookings for the pool, for our pool parties. And the food handlers class is going to be May twenty-fourth at six o'clock at the Legion.
On the paint, have you ordered it?
I'm getting ready to order it.
Okay, because, uh, I was talking to Suzie about primer. Maybe we might need to prime it, issue, we haven't primed it for a couple years.
Ernie talked to somebody about that. Okay.
Well, did you say that Port West?
You know what I was talking about, we need to get two chips.
May seventeenth, huh?
We just need to get two chips of paint to give to Suzie enough to, so we can match it with.
Police report?
Okay, don't hear the whole lot, but, uh, just so you know, I'm sure some of yous are aware of the radio difficulties that we have here in the area, uh, due to the fact of the new digital radio system and everything. Uh, they had to upgrade it because the state's going to this digital radio system and, uh, there's times when they can't, you can't hear them, they can't hear you. So, uh, Luke McKenzie, who is the, uh, OES director up at the nine oh one center, he requested myself and the chief of the fire department send him a letter outlining what difficulties we're having with the radio system. So they're trying to get a boost repeater or something up on the repeater up here in Westernport that will, uh, somehow do a relay on it where at least your radio communication will be better with nine oh one. So I finished completing the letter today and he said it was okay, just emailed to him. So saved us a stamp, I emailed to him and I kept a copy for our files, uh, to be put in here. All it does is just outlines like the stabbing. When I looked there trying to take, let somebody send a custody and call for an ambulance and everything else for the injured victim, the radio was, they kept asking me to repeat. You ain't got time to repeat somebody when you're holding somebody with a knife in there. And so, uh, that was one instance. The instance was the fire at the Stewart's house just the other night. Um, there was numerous times I was trying to tell the ambulance which way to come in, you know, tell nine oh one to relay to the ambulance which way to come in, you know, so they wouldn't get blocked by the fire trucks because, you know, Mr. Stewart needs emergency treatment, they need to get out of there. And that didn't go through. So whenever I do a traffic stop down on forty-six, from out about Rex Out, um, I might as well just call them a cell phone because you can't get out. And the other agencies, you know, the sheriff's department and the state police, they're finding that out also. So if he can get this grant, he tried for it last year and it didn't go through. But they've got the new repeater system they're putting in down near Patterson's Creek, which will cover a bad territory down there, was all like Ridgely and, uh, Wally Ford and Short Gap. Most of that you can't get out on these new radios. So, uh, then also kind of like, you know, firearms and EMS calls in the, in the mid rise. Whenever I'm out, I go assist the ambulance and stuff, whether lifting or whatever. And, uh, once you get them, you have no communication when you're in there either. So a lot of the building, eh, eh, almost any building, I can, I can stay around here, probably try to key the mic up to get nine oh one, I won't be able to get them. So I sent that letter in to them today and I kept a copy, so, you know, we'll see how that goes from there. Other than that, uh.
Well, Carrie, I don't wanna, Carrie gave me this email, she said you already have the laptop that this letter's discussing.
Oh, okay, well, that's the, i- if that's the one through the governor's highway safety, she's talking about the e-tickets.
Yeah, e-ticket.
Remember a while back I mentioned to you about I was going down to meet with Margaret Walker? I went to Potomac State College. And the sheriff's department was there, Potomac State College, and they gave, what they did is they're an older Dell laptop. But that's, they're just, they're new, they're brand new, they just haven't gone them all out. They're trying to do the e-ticket, which is electronic tickets. Uh, I've already got it over there, I've got the, the printer that goes in the cruiser. And it's got a roll of whatever that paper is they call, I can't remember what it's called, but anyway, it's got.
Thermographic.
Yeah, it's got that in there, uh, the computer, everything else. And that's when I bought that, uh, I had what was left over on my grant money before, I bought that little tablet that I've got for the, I guess, and then what is it? That, that what it is, we're talking here? Anyway, our little thing is, is that a tablet, was that what I got?
Yeah.
Okay. And I talked to Margaret Walker and she's with the governor's highway safety program. And it's combined with Mothers Against Drunk Driving, all that stuff, it's a DUI thing. They're going with all this stuff, they gave us all that stuff for free and she, at the time, she hadn't got back with me, Carrie mentioned to me, but, uh, I got all that because it would take up less space. And that gives us another computer we could use if we needed it. So, um, she was supposed to have the IT guy get in touch with me, but the one that she had had accepted another position somewhere, so he was leaving and they were trying to get a new one in. And Margaret never got back in touch with me, so now Carrie brought this up. And what that, how that works out is if I, if I do a ticket here, instead of writing one out, if you do it on the e-ticket, once you put it in and everything, then it automatically sends to Carrie if she's the one to take care of the citations.
Yeah.
Then she already has what it is and everything there, copy of it and all, and then it also automatically pours it to DMV. And you don't have to worry about all that stuff, it's a big, yeah. All you gotta do then is worry about them coming to pay it and then person, whatever goes to the fine, for the court cost fees.
Yeah, so that's what I was reading, that sounded good, so they would even pay for the paper rolls.
Mm-hmm, yep, so I've already got, I, I, I think she actually gave me an ex, maybe more. I don't even know, you need a paper roll, do you?
No, because.
You wouldn't have to print it, would you?
You would need it.
I would, I would need, yeah, I've already got some printed.
Because once it's downloaded, but I would have to have the program.
Like I say, it's not that easy to hook up. That's why she was posting when they got their new IT guy. Cause see, the region we're in may be in a different region than who Carrie's been talking to. Cause the region we're in, Margaret Walker, she's out of Martinsburg, she covers this area. That's why she came from Martinsburg to meet us at Potomac State College to give us the computer and stuff. But I've already got the stuff to do the computer, I just, I just.
I found out about it from the court, um, clerk from Fairmont.
Does it have to be her that installs it?
It, well.
Not according to the email.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, but their IT guy has to do your whatever that is, software or whatever.
No, according to that email, our only charge would be to have a person come in to do, to download the email or the software to my computer.
Install the laptops in the cruiser and set up the report being software.
Right, yeah.
That would be our only cost.
If my computer, if the library comes, maybe I could talk her into giving us.
Yeah, and like I said, uh, with the, um, you know that little laptop wherever it came from, was here when I got here two years ago, almost two years ago? I mean, it's, that other one I've got is just a clean, brand new Dell laptop, it's pretty tough. It's like, almost like a tough book almost, but it'll do, you know, say, stuff, just a little bit. I don't know if it has the right whatever, when, I don't know that stuff. Whatever things you need to do, reports and all, but I mean, that's what I had mentioned, remember when y'all were talking about getting a computer? I said I had that one from there, we, whatever, but. But I mean, uh, yeah, we can go through all that stuff whenever we want to and get.
It'd be better than the one you get.
And like I said, it would work out better if that little tablet I got, which she told me it would, that's what she said. So I got that little thing, it'd be smaller than having that big thing in the cruiser.
Okay.
Cause you don't have much room in them, in them cars, so, you know, with all the radios and junk you got in there.
But the one thing that was mentioned on that, um, email was that they type it incorrectly.
Yeah.
Right. I don't know how to do that.
I would have to decipher.
It might as not as bad as some.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, oh.
No, I'm not talking about yours.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about yours.
I'm glad you're in that hot seat, not me.
DMV would have kicked them back, I had, didn't have the color of the car, the model of the car, the year of the car, anything. I'm like, where is this stuff? So I had to keep adding it in.
But I think that's something we need to look into because if I can get that on here, then I already said I can put invoices in there for every ticket and keep track better than I can trying to go through this drawer every week. Because right now it's not being kept tracked of. I can put them in as, as an invoice in QuickBooks and we would have like a printout every week.
And DMV automatically has them and we ain't gotta worry about when a person doesn't do what they're supposed to and they're suspended, they already got it.
Cause I have been, you know, emailing four and five at a time for what wasn't not done last year. And they said I only have a year to get them in before they can, you know, cut them off.
Okay, is that all?
That's about it for me, let's see, but, oh, I forgot, did, I didn't do it again. Pause, we'll get, we'll get that handicap sign up there.
Yes. I was actually walking the dog the other day.
It said the corner of Harrison Street.
Standing on that wheelchair and I went back and politely said, would you mind getting off of that? That's for wheelchairs and they got smart looking and said, we're in a wheelchair.
So I'm gonna do it in, do it in the safe back here and grab an extra base.
So I'd like to get a sign up and maybe get a metal sign that we could bolt right onto it. So like I said, the ones that I'd put on there are gone.
Well, like I told you the other day, me being kinda nosy guy that I am, went through the signs. I found a couple of the older handicap signs. So I got two over there that.
Cause what I'd be voted on, like the flat part of it?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll just, we'll enforce that.
And I still haven't found out if we have a handicap template for the.
Okay, to spray paint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all paint that curb though, like where there's a curb on the edge of, the edge of the sidewalk or the road that goes up by there, we're gonna park, we were there with three places, weren't we?
Yeah.
Three spaces.
Like I said, Patty Coleman come in today and her daughter's in a wheelchair. And she said, what do I do if I come down with my daughter and somebody's on it? And I said, number one, you call Robbie.
Yep.
You tell, ask them to get off the swing because they're not in a wheelchair. If they don't, you call Robbie. Number three, the parents will be responsible for a fine if they continue.
To use it.
That is for wheelchairs and handicap.
There's other swings there.
Yeah, they got their swings, there's two different sets of swings over there.
They ought to be happy they can use them.
Yep. That's what I told her, you should never have to wait to get on handicap swings that when you're, you got the handicapped down right now in a wheelchair. I was hoping to bring the Maran Manor people down too in a wheelchair, but I have a picnic.
That'll be good.
I'll be able to get in there. I was gonna get with Wendy, cause I, I deal with Wendy at Maran Manor. Get her to have her, bring some of their people down, get them to use that. Patty said her daughter absolutely loves it.
Does she?
Yeah. That it's, just kinda brings tears to your eye and everything.
Yeah, no, it gets, it's, it's gonna get its use. Well, that's good, like I said, I didn't know whether he needed that woman, I know that one up there, where that old greenhouse up there of George McNeil's is, old Harrison, right near the corner of Gordon. That son's been there and there's no handicap, there's no one lives there for that anymore.
Well, we can take out one down, I'm sure we got other places.
Is that, uh, uh, Wealthy's place? Or, uh, East Hampshire or West Hampshire you're talking, at Top Mill?
Who's house?
Oh, I can't think of her name, Wealthy, Wealthy, I'll leave, is that her blue house? Had two boys, I can't think of her. They're on right beside Jason, uh, or Jason, uh, Warner, in the blue and white house.
Oh.
Well, the one I've got.
The handicap sign there, but I don't know if she still lives there or not.
Is Wendy there?
That's it, Wendy?
No, she's not there anymore.
Okay, well, see, that one needs to be removed and then.
That's right, that's Andrew Hudson's house that needs to be taken off the wall. Oh, yeah, right up here, yeah, on East Hampshire. Is that three of them?
I'll get with you, Rick, and we'll go around and pull them, so.
Like I said, once we get it marked, there's no reason they can't.
Nope.
Cause when they finally got off, I said, didn't you realize that was a wheelchair swing? And they said, yeah, so what?
Hey.
Please don't, I said, just please don't get on it.
I'll tell you what, when you, since you was mentioning about your IT, whoever your IT is, let me check them because I'm having issues with my.
Okay.
One that you got there.
She's due, that's why I was asking.
Let me know, so maybe get something checked out on it too, okay? Appreciate, that's all I got.
I'll get with you one day and you show me where you.
Okay, under, under business I don't have, I just have food handlers class, like I said, that's May, is that a Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, May twenty-fourth.
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, May twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
It starts at six o'clock, but registration starts at five thirty, at six o'clock, the door will be locked. If it's two minutes after six, you do not get in. They're very strict about that, if you're coming to the food handlers class, you gotta be in the building by six o'clock, they lock the door and let nobody else in.
What's the charge for that?
Um, almost sure it's eight dollars.
I think that's what it's going to.
So that's it.
Can you find out for sure?
I'm sure it's a food store.
Okay, I'll call John happy. Okay, and under new business, the health department permits, like I said, I got them. And when I call John about the price, I'll ask him, cause we all, we've always paid for, I think it's two hundred dollars we paid at the pool. We had to pay for the pool itself and then we had to pay for food service. But now they, they got parks, we, we're, mine has a thing on there, so I don't know if we have to pay another fee or get another permit so we can take that.
For what?
Huh?
For what?
I'm, I'm not understanding it.
Parks and Recs would come out of Parks and Recs that one day.
I mean, but to get a permit. I mean, but to get a permit, we've never had to have a permit.
No, I hope not, unless they.
But the application for a permit to operate, now one of the, one of the places they have on here is Park Playground. That was never on there before.
Would they inspect the bathrooms or something?
Okay.
Huh?
Maybe they inspect the bathrooms?
Like I said, the list went from just a couple things. Now it's got adult daycare center, bed and breakfast, body piercing studio, campground, child care center, correctional facility, labor camp, mass gatherings, fair festival. Are we gonna have to have one for Home Fest? That was the other thing I wanted to add.
This is Mineral County, right?
Yeah. That's what I was.
Well, you have for parks and.
It's a separate category.
Most of the vendors have their own, right?
Yeah, everybody that comes to the Home Fest has to have their own food handlers permit and everything.
But you still might have to apply to have it here.
Yeah. Then park playground, producer dairy farm, public restroom, recreational water facility, that's what we always paid for. And residential care facility. So all these choices was never on there. So I'm gonna have to ask John what we have to have before I could go down with the check.
Well, we've read it already, I guess they've read it here.
I'll call him this week for that and. Okay. I just wanted to let everybody know, if you didn't come to that meeting last night, I thought it was very informational. Shay, I can't, I can't remember the man's last name.
Straight.
Shay, Shay Straight from Fairmont. And I think if we follow his lead, I think we can get a lot done in this town. It's not, they come in and do stuff for you. You have to get together as a group of citizens and work. And then if you show you're doing that, they will bring different organizations into your direction that will help you. And it was, I thought it was very.
Do you wanna be on it, give your name to Ms. Fallon?
Suzie can talk more about it when she's here the next time.
I was hoping to catch you, but I had a graduation to attend.
But like I said, I'm glad she found him and brought him to town because I thought, I thought, didn't you think?
Yeah, yeah, very much.
I wasn't gonna miss that.
I thought it was very informative.
That's a nice one.
He's willing to come once a month for a meeting. And as long as there's people willing to come to the meetings, he's willing to bring people to help us. So I think it's a step in the right direction, so.
I had a problem bringing him down. I brought him up there.
Hey, everybody got anything else? The next meeting will be May ninth. Uh, can we still have Steve come to the meeting?
I don't know. Uh, we will have to find that out. Because I, I don't know.
We finalized our pseudo project, didn't we?
I think we did.
Yes, the only thing that I know that you need to do now is you all need to call region eight and set up for the interview date on those three engineering firms so you can do that.
That's on the next agenda.
Pam was in, didn't Pam say something about coming in, give your closing thing and then talk about something about, um.
They have to vote on. Vote on the, yeah, that's on the next agenda.
Yeah, okay, we'll just go ahead and set the meeting for five thirty. Because when they send it, they can't change it, so it'd be easier to be a half hour early. All right, I'm gonna get my shirt on, maybe one second. All right, second. All in favor? A pooh?
Yeah, the night.
Meeting adjourned.